Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the A-ten Regional School District Planning Board. It's five thirty-one. And the meeting is being recorded. So roll call attendance, Charlie?
I'm here.
Great. I'm here. Carl? George?
Here.
Tom Burkle?
Present.
Great. Jim?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Don? Oh, Don. John Silver, I think it's not able to join. Kim? Susan?
Here.
Tara?
Here.
Nancy? Colin? Nadine?
Here.
Bonnie?
Here.
Michael? Patrick? Bill? Bill's in Europe. Marie?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Got your power back?
Hey, everything's good. The frogs are out. That's all I can say. That's my message. That's my message. We share the frogs.
Okay. Sarah?
Here.
Okay, so we've got a call. First thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Those were circulated a day or two ago. We've got some echoing going on. Amanda? So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So I moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so then Andy moved and Deb seconded. Is that right? Okay. Any comments, corrections to the minutes? George?
Yes, on page seven. It says, I don't have the minutes in front of me at the moment. But it says, George McGurn said the Egremont School was leased to the district. What I actually said is the Egremont School is owned by the town. And the district takes care of the maintenance of the buildings and grounds from the school. District does that, but there is no lease. Since that's on our agenda this evening, wanted to clear that up.
So I'm going to change this to read, George McGurn stated that the Egremont School is owned by the town of Egremont. And the district takes care of maintenance costs?
Yes, buildings and grounds takes care of maintenance. Correct, Bonnie?
It's not just the subcommittee. The district takes care of maintenance.
Yeah, district takes care of maintenance. And then we'll pick it up with and point it out that this whole conversation is really about the New Marlboro School.
Yes, I did say that.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to take a vote on the minutes. Charlie?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Carl's still not here. George?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes, and Michael's
I'm sorry.
Michael is in the attendees.
Promoted him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Peter? Steve?
Yes.
Don? Coburn. John is not here. Kim, has she joined? No. Susan?
Yes.
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Has Nancy joined? No. Colin? Nadine? Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Great. Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Abstain.
Abstain and Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are passed. All right, so in keeping with our new protocol, I am going to take public comments at the beginning of the meeting and at the end. So before we get started, are there any public comments from the attendees? I see we have, in addition to the press, five attendees this evening, so that's nice to see. I'm not seeing any hands up. Just give it another minute. Okay, so we will proceed to item four. Continued discussion of the Regional School District Agreement. So we have led off talking about costs associated with leased school buildings and it's a little unfortunate that neither Bill nor John are on tonight because they had some thoughts about this provision. But we'll see if we can make progress without them. I did attempt to sort of break down the section in the regional agreement in a way that's a little easier to follow. I just did that this afternoon. I couldn't circulate it before because it's coming out of my head and not councils or the project manager, so I couldn't circulate that until we got to a public meeting, but I would like to put it up on the screen to sort of kick off the conversation. And we'll see how far we get with it. So do I have the ability to share my screen?
You should now.
Okay.
Nancy's in the way, in the attendees list as well.
Thank you, just promoted her.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
No, can't see it yet. No.
Not yet.
Tricky.
Oh, there we go.
We can see your desktop right now.
Right.
I know, that's the tricky part. I was trying to avoid that, Jake, but hopefully no one could really see us for long enough to figure it out.
I'm very impressed. That's an awesome desktop you got, Lucy.
So you can see this section four now? Yes?
Yes, we can see it.
So, and again, this has not yet been vetted by either Jake or Russell. But most of this language was in the line, is in the language in the draft. It's just I've I've broken it out into categories, so it's easier for us to review. So the first section is location. And this language was in the prior draft, "The district shall provide suitable school facilities for students of all the member towns. All schools shall be located within the member towns. The committee shall determine the location, structure, and physical plans of all schools and school facilities." This is a little bit new, so I'm going to highlight it. "The district shall soon all expenses of operation and maintenance of all district schools." So it used to read "all district-owned schools." But based on our discussion at the last meeting, where we agreed that even for the leased schools, operation and maintenance costs that are not capital costs, and we'll get to that in a minute, should be borne by the district. So that's in this section. School ownership section says, "School buildings and member towns may be owned by the district or leased to the district." So it's one or the other, owned or leased. And then this next sentence is the sentence that Desi suggested we include to make clear that the school committee has general charge and superintendence over any leased buildings. Need a period there. Term of the lease, this is really statutory. I've just broken it out in this separate section. That the lease shall be for a term of not more than twenty years and shall include a provision that allows the district to extend the term for an additional term not to exceed twenty years. "Any such renewal shall be at the option of the committee by notice to the town at least one year prior to expiration of the initial or any renewal term." "Any such lease shall also allow the town from which the premises is leased to reclaim possession of the premises upon termination." Okay, so none of that was controversial in our last meeting. So now we're getting to the section that talks about school improvements. Right to improve. "Any lease of a school building shall authorize, authorized, not require, authorize the district to improve, alter, remodel, or modernize the premises." So I've got a new defined term here, "school improvements." Okay, so capital costs incurred in connection with any such school improvements. Authorized by the district, remember we've gone through the section of the draft regional agreement that deals with how that authorization has to be voted. Right, in order to incur debt, you need two-thirds of the school committee, three-quarters of the towns, et cetera. So if the capital costs are authorized by the district, those capital costs shall be borne by the district and assessed to the member towns in accordance with the methodology set forth in. And this is what we're going to be getting from the finance subcommittee when they bring forward their recommendation. There will be a specific methodology in place for assessing capital costs for these leased schools among the member towns. And not to spoil the punchline for Nadine, what the finance subcommittee has in its proposed recommendation is that is a reverse ninety-ten. It's really ten-ninety. If there are capital costs incurred for those two leased schools, one in New Marlboro and one in Egremont, those capital costs will be assessed across the eight member towns with essentially, and I'm simplifying here, ninety percent of those costs being borne by the five southern Berkshire member towns and ten percent of the cost being borne by the Berkshire Hills towns during the term of the bond for the high school. So basically reverses what we're talking about with how the cost, capital costs for the high school are going to be shared. And then once that high school's paid off, capital costs for all school improvements are going to be shared according to a unified methodology. And again, this is all going to be presented by the finance subcommittee when they bring forward their recommendation. But it doesn't need to be addressed in this part. We're just referencing the section in the assessment methodology part of the regional agreement that will spell out how capital costs are assessed. And then this next section, which is highlighted in yellow, gets to this, and this is here just for discussion purposes because these ideas were floated at our last meeting. Whether to have what I described as sort of a springing right of the district to receive title to the premises if the district decides that it wants to incur debt to improve those buildings. So the way this reads, and again, just for discussion purposes, the district may condition, may, doesn't have to, may condition any decision to incur any capital costs that will require the district to incur debt on the town's agreement to convey title to the premises or any part thereof. So it could be an agreement just to convey title to the building and not the surrounding land. That's possible to do legally. So the district may condition its decision to incur capital costs that will require the district to incur debt on the town's agreement to convey title to the premises or any part thereof to the district. Should a member town decline to so convey title, such member town may elect to incur such capital cost itself. So this is essentially what happened in Egremont. Right, so there was significant improvements that needed to be made, and the town of Egremont didn't convey title to the premises to the district, wasn't required to, wasn't asked to, but did elect to incur those capital costs itself. So I'm building that possibility, not that requirement, into this language. And then what happens if neither thing happens? What happens if the member town declines to either convey title to the premises to the district or itself incur that debt? Then the district would have the option to terminate the lease. So that captures all the ideas that we were sort of batting around at our last meeting. Would you like me to pause there or continue through the rest of this document?
I have a question.
Okay, Don.
If, if the, if the town decides that it wants the land, the building conveyed to it, should we consider whether the ninety-ten should pertain to that transaction?
Say again, Don. I missed the first part of that.
I said, if, if the town agrees to convey title and the district wants the title, should that affect the ninety-ten or ten-ninety that you mentioned earlier? Is an issue that perhaps we should consider.
Okay. Bonnie?
First, at our last meeting, I suggested that you speak with Beth, who's been dealing with the definite, whole definition of maintenance since she arrived in the district. Did you do that, Lucy?
I have not heard from Beth, no.
Not heard from her. I had asked that you were baking the contact. What, all right, so you haven't discussed it. I think though you've really laid it out in a clear way, there are nuances that we definitely would have to deal with in terms of what is considered maintenance. So for example, if there's a change in ADA laws, is that considered maintenance if it's a three-hundred, four-hundred thousand dollar project?
I think we'll get to that when we get to definition of capital cost. Why don't I keep going? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, yeah, so here, costs of maintenance, right? "No rental shall be charged to the district by any member town that was in the prior draft, provided however, the district shall bear all costs for insurance, maintenance, and repair, utilities, and other services associated with the premises. Such costs shall be classified as operating costs except for costs that are recognized as capital costs under applicable school finance law or guidelines. With such capital costs assessed to the member towns according to the methodology set forth in the section that's going to deal with capital costs for how to assess capital costs across the eight member towns." So there's a reference here to applicable school finance law or guidelines. And the reason I didn't put in actual numbers is that these guidelines and this law can change over time. Right, so we don't want to say if it's five thousand dollars or less for non-instructional equipment, that's not a capital cost because although that is the rule now under DESI guidelines, that may change. It may jump up to ten thousand dollars in a year, two years, or five years, or ten years. So I want to reference the applicable law and guidelines and have that determine whether a particular cost is classified as a capital cost or an operating cost. Do we have Sharon on the call tonight? Jake?
I don't, this is people, I don't.
I don't think she's here, no.
Okay. And Peter, I'm not going to put you on the spot on this, but I will pull up if I can do it without disclosing all my confidential information. The chart of accounts. So this is what DESI pointed us to for definition of capital costs. I will point out that this document actually doesn't define capital costs. What it defines is how certain costs should be classified under these codes when you're reporting out, I don't know, help me here, Jake, when you're reporting out school budget?
Yeah, spending patterns.
Great. So Jake, do you want to just walk the group through this? Or do you want me to do it?
Well, there's a lot here. I don't know how much you want to walk people through. I think, you know, basically the, the reference to capital as a word is layered throughout the, this chart of accounts. And they fall under, you know, a variety of topics from technology to you know, to, you know, school facilities. So I think what Lucy's getting at is the idea that capital itself is not defined as a very specific number, although most of the capital on here, when it's referred to capital, tends to set a threshold of five thousand dollars in a year or more usefulness, in effect. So there is another category and of extra ordinary maintenance. I don't know if you want to get into that now, Lucy?
Yeah, I mean, I think this first sentence is helpful in just sort of framing it out. So acquisition of land or existing buildings, improvements of grounds, construction of buildings, additions to buildings, remodeling of buildings, or acquisition of initial or additional non-instructional equipment exceeding the five thousand dollar unit costs and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extraordinary maintenance costs as defined by this regulation are all under this category, this seven-one-hundred and following category of capital-type costs, right? And so this is what DESI points to when they say this is our definition of capital cost. So it's pretty specific, Bonnie, in this chart of accounts. And I guess the question for both Sharon and Beth is whether they agree with this DESI definition of capital costs and can live with a methodology that says if it falls within these categories, it's going to go into the capital cost bucket and be assessed according to our capital cost methodology. And if it doesn't fall within these buckets, it's going to be assessed as an operating cost.
Lucy?
Yes, sir.
I thought you said last, at the last meeting, that we were, that DESI said we were obliged to use their definitions of capital. Did I misunderstand?
No, that's what I said, Don, but then when we talked to DESI and I pressed them on what their definition of capital cost is, and could they point me to the statute that actually has a definition of capital cost? There isn't one. So they have this chart of accounts which describes what they view as capital cost.
But aren't we bound to follow it?
Well, that's what I'm saying here. I'm saying such costs shall be classified as operating costs except for costs that are recognized as capital costs under applicable school finance law or guidelines. What we could do, what DESI said we could do is say that although these are capital costs, we've decided to assess certain of these capital costs differently. So we could, we are permitted to say in our regional agreement, capital costs less than fifty thousand dollars shall be assessed as if they're operating costs. You are permitted to do that. DESI acknowledged that you are permitted to do that.
Well, can't we just authorize the town committee to do that, to say, the school committee? That the school committee is authorized to do what you said?
That's, 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 without setting a without setting a dollar amount?
Well, I thought you said there was a dollar amount, fifty thousand.
No, no, I just made that up. I just, that was an arbitrary number I just chose.
Oh.
It could be, it could be ten thousand, it could be fifty thousand, it could be a hundred thousand, it could be whatever we decide. If we want to do that, or we can just go by the school finance law definition and guideline definitions of capital costs and say anything that's defined that way will be assessed according to our capital cost methodology, and anything that doesn't fall within those categories will be assessed according to our operating cost methodology. And those two methodologies, as you know, are very different.
Didn't Beth hear to, because we had looked for her for a response?
Say again?
Here, I'm here. So I think also we're guided by our auditors, just in general. So the five thousand dollar rule is a common practice industry-wide. There, so I think you can do either of the things that Lucy suggested. There has been times when, you know, you've, we've made purchases of an individual, let's say, technology that might be, you know, we buy let's say, technology that might be, you know, we buy four or five um items of five thousand dollars and bundle that. The, one of the rules of thumb is whether or not you're going to amortize the um, the cost of those over a certain period of time. That's when they define it as a capital cost. So, um, I think this is totally in line with what DESI expectations would be. Um, but you do have some flexibility in how you want to classify costs. So, if it got to um a topic, um, you know, you're making a purchase of, I don't know, let's just say ten, five thousand dollar items, and you want to bundle that and amortize it over twenty years as a capital cost, you could bring that to the school committee for approval um based on a recommendation from an auditor. But I think you're totally, this is totally fine and and recommended practice statewide.
Great.
I think the other problem, if I can just
Yeah.
take a moment, I think, um, you know, a challenge that we've had in Southern Berkshire and and has been in agreements in other districts that I've I've worked in is that sometimes the definition of um maintenance versus capital is not very well spelled out. And then there's a history of past practice and um how people have dealt with those costs in the past. And that has been, so I think a lot of people have gone back over the years and looked at that in their regional agreements and tried to um, make it more clear um so that people felt in the different communities that there was a common understanding of who was paying for what at what time. And um, you know, so I I just think that's something to to pay attention to. And I, from the, my origination in this district, I think our per- our agreement, as is in Southern Berkshire, could use some clarification. That's what I would say on that particular topic. And that was one of the areas we were going to look at.
Okay. Are you comfortable that that this definition of capital costs and tying it to applicable school finance law or guidelines provides the necessary classic clarification as to what's a capital cost and what's maintenance?
Right, y- yes, because I think it's in line with um what DESI would and how they would classify that. And then it plays into their overall funding formula based on maintenance of effort, et cetera. So, I think this is completely fine.
Okay, great.
I have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I Beth brought up one of the issues, but the other issue, and I don't know if Carl's on yet, but what we went through dealt with the unique situation of the Egremont School and its historic designation. And I don't know whether because of that, it would have to be delineated um in the regional agreement, because we agreed to um make sure that we didn't go in the face of the of the historic designation. But the other part, and this is what comes into the this issue that Beth raised, we, you saw it all over the newspapers, we dealt with the issue of lead paint. And we dealt with the issue of the Egremont School being classified under its original designation as not being a school. And then we had to deal with the issue of it then being a school and the guidelines being totally different in terms of what had to be done. And we're talking in terms of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Fortunately, Egremont's pride in the school, they raised a significant amount of money, but we had to, as a district, which meant all five towns incurred the cost, we had to pay for significant changes and the whole issue of maintenance came up with all of that.
Well, I think.
So, even though Lucy, you did a great job delineating, I don't know if because of the unique nature of that one school, whether there has to be a codicil to this.
Yeah, I mean, we can think about it more, but I I don't think so. I mean, we have, we have a procedure that we've agreed upon um, that's very difficult, or I shouldn't say difficult, very comprehensive uh before we can close any school. But uh if, you know, none of these things were acceptable, right? Uh, a town didn't want to convey title, the district didn't want to incur debt unless it had title. Um, the member town didn't want to elect itself to incur capital costs. Then the member town has the right to terminate the lease. Now, you know, before it could terminate the lease, it'd have to go through that whole school closure protocol, right? But uh but but I I think there is process in here to deal with pretty much any eventuality. And I don't think we can, my view, is we can't anticipate every single issue that may arise in the future uh respecting either of these two schools. I don't think we should try. I think we just need to have process that allows different possibilities to happen. That's my view. Okay, I'm gonna just finish up this section and then.
Colin's hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Colin, go ahead.
Um, could you go back to the part where it was delineating between what was capital and what was the repair? There was something about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, the chart of accounts. Okay.
Yeah.
Different document, yeah.
But isn't that sort of trying to to say that if if something's over a hundred and fifty thousand, then it's not a repair anymore? Was that what it was saying? Um, I I can't read it because it's so small, but um, but I thought you, what I was thinking about is what Bonnie was just saying.
Yeah.
Use the, use the lead paint for an example. Um.
A hundred and fifty thousand extraordinary maintenance cost.
Right, and and if it exceeded that, it's a capital?
It's, it's included in this category of expenses.
Yeah, okay, so, so using Bonnie's example, the lead paint, if the lead paint situation arose and it was under a hundred and fifty thousand, that would be considered a repair. But if someone said, let's renovate the building, um, and it was a hundred and fifty thousand, that would probably be a capital cost, meaning the lead paint's an extra- extraordinary situation. Is that, is that correct in my understanding? Because that that satisfies me as far as repairs versus capital.
I I think that's right.
That's the way we dealt with it, Lucy and Colin.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, Susan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lucy, could you put back up the language that you had up there?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so should a member town decline to either convey title to the premises or incur such debt, the district shall have the option to terminate the lease? So, it's just curious if that's another way to to close a school?
No, because, I mean, I can put in here, you know, subject to, right? The district's following the protocol, right, or the process? Yeah, that was my intent, set for in whatever section below, right?
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, any more questions on these two sections before I get to E? Okay, so E is termination of the lease. You know, what happens to the school? Um, either, it's actually not just termination of the lease, it's um
Wait, is there a D when cost of maintenance and the?
Yes, there is.
Oh, that, um, I see it.
Bonnie was doing this in like the minutes before this meeting. Okay, so, um, this section really should be, you know, when school no longer needed, right? And, you know, I'll fix these titles, but um in the event a district-owned school is no longer needed, the premises will revert to the member town in which it is located, unless the capital costs incurred to construct or improve the buildings upon such premises were funded in whole or part by the district, in which case the proceeds from any sale such buildings, to the extent such sales permitted by law, and that's something DESI said we had to insert, because currently there's no statute that expressly states that the district has the power to sell a school. But it's sort of minor. Um, the proceeds from any such sale or other use of the buildings on the premises shall be shared by the member towns in accordance with the assessment methodology set forth, you know, in our assessment methodology section below. All personal property and removable fixtures of that school will be divided by the member towns which have contributed to that school. So, that language was in um, the draft we looked at earlier. And I think people paused on that language because they were concerned about who was paying these capital costs, right? So, if the district was paying the capital cost, shouldn't the district get the money from any sale? Um, even if it's a leased school? And I guess my, and again, this is just my personal viewpoint, but my view is, just like in any commercial lease, if you have a long-term commercial lease, uh, and you have the right under that commercial lease to fit out the space, okay? And make capital improvements to the space to fit it out for your purposes. And let's say you spend a million dollars fitting out that space, and you've got a ten-year lease with rate to renew for another ten years. At the end of that twenty-year period, when the lease terminates, you don't get the right to sell that building or share in the proceeds of the sale of that building. You're tenant. If you choose to fit out the space and make that capital investment, it's with the knowledge and expectation that if you leave the space in ten years, twenty years, thirty years, those improvements go with the building. And I think that's uh, a pretty well-accepted and recognized approach with long-term leases, and I think it would make sense here uh as well. I I I don't frankly see the need of the district to recoup capital improvements in leased buildings, because presumably, when the district makes the decision to make that capital improvement, they're thinking they're going to stay in the building for a long time. And so, the cost of that capital improvement is amortized over, over that long period of time. So, that's the way I look at it. But I'm gonna open the floor for others to uh weigh in with their points of view.
I I have my hand raised.
Okay, let me just see how many hands that got. Okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
Alright, so, um, the first line says, in the event a district owns the school, but you just described a leased school. So, are you saying section F would reply, apply to both?
No, I'm saying it only applies to district-owned schools.
Oh, okay.
That's my point. That's why it's not, there's no parallel provision for uh leased schools.
Alright, that was the, and who determines it's no longer needed?
Well, that, you'd have to go through the school closure protocol. That, in order to make that determination, right? Uh, you'd need to close a school. I mean, I can't imagine a district-owned school, I can't imagine the school committee determining a district-owned school is no longer needed um, unless we have such a dramatic drop in enrollment that it just no longer makes sense to have more than one middle school, more than one elementary school, you know? But I mean, that's certainly not what we're contemplating here.
So, just for clarification, do you think just putting in a modifier needed, you know, and based upon the whatever protocol that is?
Yeah, so, sort of like what Susan asked me to add up here. Right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, more hands, any more hands? So, um, man, I I don't think we should um necessarily adopt this language tonight, but I I would like to uh, get consensus or even emotion around the concepts. Uh, and then I can have Russ vet this language, have Jake take a look at the language, and, you know, we can then plop it in the next version of the regional agreement. But the, but the concepts, I, I, I'm wondering whether we're ready to vote on the concepts that this language describes.
I would, I would move to, what what did you call this whole section? Does it have a title up above?
Yeah, it has a title, section four.
Okay.
Let's just call it section four.
I move that the committee approved the concepts discussed in section four um, so it can go to council.
Okay, in section four as presented
As presented
tonight.
On March twenty ninth
Okay.
to the full planning board.
I'll second that.
Great, uh, any more discussion on this before we move to a vote? Okay, can I take this down?
Please.
Yeah, I agree. Scott, Sharon, there we go.
But thank you for the work.
Oh, you're welcome. Um, okay, Charlie?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, Carl, you're here.
Yeah, um, and I'm embarrassed why I wasn't there at the beginning, but I won't go into it, but the answer is yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Uh, Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Great, um, Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, did I miss anyone?
Yep, you missed me, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, you've joined.
I'm in. All good, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, that was the hardest one, I think, so thank you everyone for that. Um, intra district choice, I'm gonna. Turn this one over to Jake to explain.
For.
His, his outline.
Yeah, Amanda, do you wanna give me share screen too?
Yes. I should just do that.
Put this up, I know.
Anyway. Here we go.
Okay, let's see if we can make it a little bit smaller. Alright, so you've, you've all received this memo or memo, it's just a. A short um. Um. Description of language that is um up for discussion tonight related to intra district choice, I believe the last meeting I did a. A brief overview and then was charged with um articulating this. This is the result of that. So in effect, the question is, would we allow intra district choice? Um, and so intra district choice in effect is when. If you have two schools that offer the same grades. Um, do you allow students and families to choose which school they go to? And so um, that's really the decision point here. Uh, the recommendation, which is really not a lot different than I had outlined. And um verbal description at the last meeting was um, there are three parts to this. Um, the first part is that we would have a stay put. Period. And the stay put would basically allow any student who's. Um, well, I, let me start with a, with a core recommendation, the core recommendation is that. Um, children will attend the school which is closest to their home, it's really that simple. Um, so closest in proximity to their residence. And the district will provide transportation. So that's really the recommendation. But there are three exceptions. And the first exception is the idea that we would have a stay put, um, which would really cover in effect this transition period. Um, during which students who are currently attending a school. Would be able to stay in that school through. Um, the grade span that that school um includes. And I, there's really only um three schools that this would impact. Under Mountain, Muddy Brook and New Marlboro. Um, and uh, this would allow students to stay in that particular school and we would provide transportation, so that's what I call the stay put exception. The second exception would be if the district ever organized particular programs. That are specialized programs um for um children with particular and unique needs. That would result in automatic intra district choice. To that school and the district would provide transportation. Um, this does happen in larger districts where you might have a concentrated. Special education program or English language program. Or alternative education program, I'm not saying that would or wouldn't happen in a eight, ten district. Uh, but if, if that were developed and those students would obviously attend those particular programs in that school and be transported. And then the third category is what I refer to as non-automatic intra district choice. And that would be that um families who want to attend the school which is not. Closest to the residence could apply. And that application would be based, the acceptance of that application would be based on. Um, the grade level they're applying for and the number of seats that are available. That would have to be determined on an annual basis. Um. So I'm not including a lot of detail here because I think one of the things we discussed at the last meeting was. How much of this should be in the regional agreement and how much of this should be in a school committee policy to, to be developed? Down the road, but I think what I also heard and you know, reviewing the minutes before the meeting tonight. Uh, I think this, this comment was made by a number of, of, of members. Is people wanna know which school their kids are gonna go to. So um. Anyways, um, this is basically what we have laid out, the only other. You know, variables you could consider, but again, I would suggest that this probably be. Um, assigned to the, to the school committee to figure out would be.
Be.
Would you provide any um preference for? Um, siblings, so if you had a sibling in a school. Um, and um, for whatever reason, um, the, the student was in that particular school had been accepted in choice. Intra district choice, would you allow? The trailing sibling to then have preference for intra district choice into that particular school? That is allowable under regular school choice. Um, regulations in the state. Um, and that's really the only. Exception that the state allows, there's really no other discriminatory. Criteria you can use to um. Offer preference to some students and not others when it comes to choice. So I can stop there and sort of let folks ask questions. Or have a discussion, to be honest with you. There's a lot.
Yeah, Jake, you wanna just recognize the people with hands up?
It looks like it's Susan, Deb, Peter, Don, Susan?
Uh, yeah, um, just one clarification regarding stay put. That also applies at DuBois, there's some uh people, you know, students there from southern Berkshire towns, so you know, they might. I would, I would obviously add those in that they could stay put. The other, the question I have is on this non-automatic. If that's an annual analysis, so if my child's in um. Fifth grade at DuBois. Do I have to apply for them to become in sixth grade in DuBois, or is it how it is now, once you're accepted into the district? You can stay in the school.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the um. I mean, again, that would be policy that likely be developed by the school committee, but. Um, that would certainly be my recommendation is, what we wanna reduce. Um, for any child is the number of transitions, so we wouldn't want kids to be bouncing around or families to be anxious around whether they have a seat. Uh, in the year that um, in the, in the next grade, so I would say that once they're accepted through intra district choice, they stay. In that particular school through the grade levels that school offers.
Alright, well, I appreciate that, you know, we want the school committee to do it, but I truly think if you want the parent's support. I'm voting on this, they're, they're gonna wanna have some concrete comfort zone at that point. That if they're in one school, they don't have to reapply every year, that, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Deb?
Um, I just have one sort of point of clarification, and that is. That I'd wanna make sure that students in the district have, are. Given open spots in schools they want their children to be in before students from out of the district choice in. Um, I, I'd like that clarified because. They should have, because they're, they're in the district, they should have preference. Um, and then my other comment was just that we need to think about transportation. I don't know if it's mandated, that it's required regardless of which school within the district they go to. But my preference would be to see transportation offered for students. Within the district, even if they're not going to the. School closest to their residence.
You're saying if the student was accepted on pathway three, which is not automatic.
Yeah.
That the district provide transportation.
I, yes, I would like us to at least consider that.
Yeah.
That could be like a taxi service, Deb, I mean, you have one. Now, one kid. In the northern tip of Alford, hey? Who? Maybe is already. Uh, in. Uh, Muddy Brook. Um, and then the parents, for whatever reason, decide I'd rather have them down in Sheffield. And we basically have to get a taxi to pick them up and bring them down to Sheffield and take them back home every day. I think that's a lot for the district to take on, if, if they're not falling into, we're already here.
Yeah.
Um, and we wanna continue through the grade span. And it's not the closest school to guarantee transportation. Um, to a school that's much farther away, it's a lot for the district to take on in terms of cost.
I hear you, um. I'll think about it.
Okay.
Peter Dillon is next, I'm just going down the screen here, Peter?
Yeah, the, the two things that I put my hand up because I wanted to um. Um, emphasize the importance of keeping siblings together. Uh, I, I just, I think that's the same thing. Uh, for families, and if the, the older siblings in a school, th- then I think the younger ones should have preference. The, the, but then I heard what Deb said about the. The choice students, it's sort of been a hallmark that. Once students choice in, we always treat them the same, and we don't make distinctions between. Students that live in our towns and students are from outside our towns, so I, I wanna talk about that some, some more. Uh, I'm uncomfortable with having uh choice students have some. O- other kind of status.
Well, I, just to sort of talk that through a little bit. If, let's say that in the student. I- i- if you were going to identify the number of seats that are available, for example. Um, in grade three. Um, at a particular school. Um, the question is if you had five seats available. Would you first offer those up for intra district choice before? You offer those up for inter-district choice? Um, and keep in mind, you'd also have to probably. Ensure that you kept your um promises to any districts, any towns you have tuition agreements with. I assume. So there's a few things, these things would have to sort of work. To some degree at the same time.
Well, what, but I guess what I'm thinking about is if it's the. If it's the third graders' first year in the school system. Um, then, then if there's not space, you don't give them the seat. But if it's their second year in the school system and you have an obligation to keep them till they graduate or they move away. Uh, then I don't know that you could do that.
I was not implying that for students who, once they're in the district, it was for students coming into the district, no, I fully. Either, I wouldn't, it's the same thing as asking parents to reapply every year.
Right.
Not an okay thing to do to families.
No. You would have to establish the number of seats available, then you'd have to have a. A policy that allows intra district choice request first.
Yeah.
And then based on whether all the seats are full, you would then offer that up. For out of in- interdi- di- district, which would be from towns not, that are not members.
New intradis- inter-district.
New.
Yeah. No, I agree, I.
That was good, no, that's great, that's all I got.
Thanks. I think Don is next.
Uh, the question Jake. The, the state exception for siblings. Is that something automatic? Or is that something we have to make a reference to in the number four? In this recommendations for RA language?
Well, it's, I would say it's not automatic if you don't have seats. But right now, under state choice guidelines. You really can't discriminate based on any criteria that the kid, this, the child brings to the table, except for the fact that they have a sibling in the school. Um, so you can treat those students as first access to the open seats. But if you don't have open seats, then they don't get access.
Well, should that be expressed in the, in this recommendations, or should there be some reference to the state policies, what I'm asking?
I think the question Don's asking Jake is. Do we have to give preference? Under state law, or is the district just permitted to give preference to siblings?
They're permitted.
So we don't have to include it, Don, but we, we could include it. If we think it's important, but then. The, the school committee. Won't have the flexibility to change that policy going forward if it's baked into the agreement.
Well, should we at least add that, that, that this policy does not prohibit? The school committee from following the state sibling policy?
Yeah, makes sense, I'm happy to write something up, I'm taking good notes, I think Colin is next. Then Andy, then Bonnie.
Um, I'm basing my comments on experience because my children. Um, my oldest started at Eggermont. And then went to New Marlboro and then over to Under Mountain. And at, uh, while the oldest was at. Uh, New Marlboro, the youngest started going to school and. We were fortunate enough that they both were able to go to New Marlboro, so. It, whoever said it earlier about families, thinking about the families, I think that's important to. Include that sibling um. Piece in here, so rather than making a recommendation. Let's put it in there, obviously the school committee who gets this can change it later on. And then on the transportation, so my, my recommendation would be to include the sibling exception in this. Um, and then uh, on the transportation thing, also in that same scenario. There was a bus that ran kids from New Marlboro to um. To Sheffield, dropped them off, they switched to another bus and got, and then got over to Under Mountain, I assume that's where they were going. That little, um, was a little bus. Was gonna go back to New Marlboro empty, but there were enough kids. That were from the Sheffield, Great Barrington, Eggermont area that were going to New Marlboro. But they all hopped on that bus and they got transportation, so is it possible in the non-automatic? To say they're responsible for providing their own transportation if transportation. Um. Routes aren't available, in other words, I, I could foresee. Buses going back and forth between. The southern Berkshire part of the district to the. The high school area, and they might end up going empty and, and therefore we might be able to provide some transportation. Just a thought.
Yeah, I guess.
Suggesting, just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, what I'll say to you right now is under. Inter-district choice, obviously, as y'all know. Districts don't have to provide transportation.
And I don't think we should, I don't, I don't think we should provide. Transportation for those families who choice, I was fully prepared to take my kids. To New Marlboro from Sheffield, didn't have a problem with that, but it just so happened that there was this empty bus.
Right.
And, and, and.
Yeah, so guys, it was one of those. Yeah, so to sort of complete my thought with the inter-district choice, I think a lot of districts do allow access. Um, to transportation for choice students when it's available. When it's.
Yeah.
Route or a drop off or a space on a bus. Yeah, it's just not a guarantee.
Alright, and so we could just leave that to the school committee when they get. Get this all up and running, we don't have to put it in this one there.
Right.
Yeah, but I still. I still would love to see the sibling thing in here because that, that would make the families who are voting on this feel much better.
I think Andy was up next, and then.
Yeah, I just have, just have a couple, a couple things, just to follow on with the transportation thing. I was under the impression that currently between the two districts. Uh, choice stu-, I mean, the districts were providing some transportation. For students choicing between the existing districts, am I wrong? Uh, my understanding is that uh, southern Berkshire provides transportation from Price Chopper. South. And Berkshire Hills used to accommodate people sort of on an ad hoc basis on empty buses, but in the. Context of COVID, we stopped and, and we're not, we're not uh, doing it again now.
Okay, yeah, and, and then that also, that leads to the, you know, the um.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Beth.
Hi, I thought you asked, I thought you asked me a question, nevermind, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, go ahead, please.
Uh, no, I was just gonna say we don't provide. Transportation directly to Berkshire Hills. We just do our own routes with a couple of stops in Great Barrington.
Right, yeah, I've seen the bus. And then sort of moving on, the the. The existing. Choice, and I I think this goes back to an earlier. Comment, the existing choices, I think. Is, oh, I was looking at that.
Oh, do you want that? I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to look at each other.
No, I don't. I like, I I'm a bureaucrat. I love paper. Give me a break. No, I mean, what I was looking at is number one state foot and and. I think it's much, it goes much further than Undermountain Elementary, Muddy Brook Elementary, New Marlboro. I I mean. I I know anecdotally of quite a number of families that. That are choicing into the high school in Sheffield and choicing into. DuBois and choice, you know, I mean, I I think that that's much more substantial and I think that that. We need to honor where those choice, where those choice agreements exist, we need to be in a position to honor those.
Yeah, I guess what I'd say though is that what that's what one does. The students who are currently in a school can stay there. We honor that.
Yeah, but your par- your paragraph is constrained by a parenthetical and I I would just get rid of the parenthetical.
Okay, I mean, the only reason I put those three in is that's the, those are the only schools. That would really have. Choice kids in that would complete a grade span. Otherwise, the two middle schools will be feeding into a common high school.
But DuBois has students that are from Southern Berkshire.
No, I understand. They 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 would stay there through progression and then I guess move to the high school. I I, all right. All right, I guess I I understand what you're saying. I.
The parenthetical confuses me. I'm sorry.
Fair enough. I can I can just take that out and not have any references. All right, Bonnie, you're up.
Okay, um, I want to second both what Andy and Susan said. Having been the person who answered questions. At the DuBois orientation or information, the kids asked more questions about. One student. I went to to New Marlboro Central, but now I'm at DuBois. Is my brother going to be able to come here? So and then where am I going? So I think we understand it, but for the families to have the security of knowing. The siblings will be able to attend. A couple of, when we fill out that annual form. That we say how many open seats there are. I guess we could just have an internal one for the district. Saying there are this many seats. Addition to other suggestion, what we did in terms of. New Marlboro Central, when Monterey School had to be closed. Is everyone who lives in New Marlboro. Gets first choice. Monterey is included in that first choice status. And then the other three towns, if there are any seats left. So we may want to look at some way. That it's giving the families the security. And then my last comment goes to the transportation. And I know this used to go on if a parent could bring the child to a pickup point. They were allowed on the school buses for transportation. So that the parent didn't have to drive the entire distance to the school. So as long as it was a recognized pickup point. So that's my other suggestion. So we don't run a taxi service, but we are giving parents. An accommodation.
Okay, thanks. Nancy, I think is a hand up.
Yeah, I do. I'm I'm one of those parents who had a, one of my kids had the choice into. Ended up choosing into. Monument and most of us whose kids had choice in drove our kids regardless of where we lived. There were no opportunities for our kids to have busing. It would have been nice, but I think that's one of the. For many of us, whether we're coming from New Marlboro or Monterey or wherever. I think for many of us, that's kind of an included. That said, with the kids. If you do have families that for whatever reasons do, they may need to choice in. For, you know, depending upon what their work circumstances are, things like that. I think that the sibling piece is really important to include. Because for parents, never mind for kids, it's a big deal. I think that a lot of the conversation seems to be being had. Who have not had to deal with choice. And I think that tho- those might be questions that we're all raising that should be put to. Parents and families who have done choicing to both districts, the back and forth choice. I think that would be helpful in terms of what would be good things to. Just saying, that's just.
Okay.
So are are we not seeing anymore? Oh, Peter Dillon.
Yeah, I'm just popping up for a sec. I I I want to be clear and I think this is our intention. That if we had a shared high school, everybody will receive busing from within the eight towns to the shared.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, I mean, the only, you don't get busing in this. In this. Program would be. Families who accept the non-automatic interdistrict choice policy. And again, the question is, how far does this board want to go with? Policy decisions around drop offs and pickups and adjusted routes and things of that. I would not suggest you do that, but that's up to you. And just, I I do wanna, Andy, I think I, when I wrote one, I probably confused everybody. But I was trying to make a point there. And I just want to make sure people have that point. So if we have a child currently in grade three at Undermountain and we merge. At grade five, when they finish grade five at Undermountain. They would naturally, as part of Southern Berkshire, go to Mount Everett. If they now live closer to DuBois, they're going there. So that was really the point I was trying to make in those three schools. Those are pivot points. But you are correct in that in the other middle schools. There would be a state put for those students, but when they. When they complete the middle schools, they're all going to a common high school. There's really not a decision point there. And I wanted folks to to see that because that I thought could be something that. Folks might have some concern about. So again, same thing would apply at Muddy Brook where the normal progression would be into. DuBois, but if now they live closer. To. Yeah, so anyways, you you get the idea.
So I I'm mindful of the time and I want to get to the rest of the. Agenda. So I think what we do, Jake, is we. Have you made the tweaks? That were discussed this evening. I think. I'm hearing a consensus around the three basic. Components of what you've got outlined here, some tweaking of the language, some reference to the ability to. Give preference to families with siblings. And we'll have new language to present at our next. Full board meeting on this. Susan, do you have a hand up on on this?
Yes, if I could just for a minute, Lucy, um. Thank you for that clarification, Jake, because I was not reading that number one that way. Again, knowing it's only for a transition period. I would ask if those families or whoever's in there could have the preference of getting their kid. To the next level because they're the ones that have been, you know, they. They've started thinking they're going to be in one district or another and then to have them change after completing that progression. You know, could not sit well. So just just my thought and I granted, I know it's just for a number of years, but hopefully they prefer.
Yeah, really just, in fact, it allows them to stay either in the currently. Assigned district middle school or the middle school that's closer to them. That's really.
Let's let's put that as a decision point, Jake, for our next discussion.
Thank you.
I've got one last question on that. Will the middle schools, um, will the middle school, uh, sorry, will the elementary schools both finish in sixth grade or fifth grade?
No suggested changes of any.
That could be problematic if they don't, if the if the districts don't end at the same, if they don't merge into middle school and.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to our miscellaneous items, which will be very short. The first is. To see this is something that. Desi. Suggested we include, so this comes up when there is a vacancy. On the school committee. And the select board with the. Remaining committee members who are resident in that town get together, post the vacancy, consider applicants. And appoint a member to fill the vacancy. Desi suggested that we put into the agreement some timeframe. Within which the select board needs to do that. And so I put in sixty days, which seemed to be enough time. There's not going to be any penalty. If they don't make it within that sixty days, but at least. We have an aspirational time in here that you're supposed to get it done within sixty days. So is there any discussion on that? Any objection to making that time period sixty days? So seeing no objection, I'm just going to include that in the next draft. That sixty day period fulfilling the vacancy. The other miscellaneous issues in section five B one. And this is something that Renee Wood, select board member in Sheffield. Suggested we consider. She asked whether. We might want to require not one public hearing on the budget, but two public hearings on the budget. And I think the rationale was. More towns. Possibly more interest. Should we have two hearings rather than one? Steve.
When we have a public hearing on the budget, I don't know about Southern Berkshire. We're lucky if anyone shows up at all unless we make a dramatic, like cut all sports. So I don't know why we need to be frustrated twice instead of just doing it once.
I I predicted that was going to be your response. I've I've attended some of those budget hearings and they are not, uh, they are not attended by a huge number of folks. Peter Dillon.
Yeah, I just, I I agree with Steve and and probably many other people on this. What one is, one is good.
Okay, anyone have a different point of view on this?
Did Renee give a reason why she was thinking to?
That there are eight towns instead of five or eight towns instead of. Yeah.
Well, she, did you, did she want them geographically dispersed so that there was? One up in. The north end and one on the south end.
Yeah, I don't remember, Andy.
I would say that we should, that one is plenty with accommodation for remote attendance so that it isn't a geographic issue.
Although that's not guaranteed. I mean, because the state could. The state could pull that anytime. Right, it was just extended or signed a little while ago for for a while. Till twenty twenty five.
Well, if we mandate one, that doesn't mean we can't have two. So if they pull it and it becomes a problem. The committee could have a second budget hearing. Am I correct?
The committee can always have a second public hearing if they wanted it, I guess, if they have time.
Right, so it doesn't preclude that if. It seems to be an, or if there's this thing about attending, you know. People from part of the count, the district not being able to come because of location, they could always. Make that decision. I don't think we need to mandate two because. As as both Peter and Steve have said, the interest is not generally that high.
Even 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 on Zoom. And but in practical terms, and this may change, but our current budget process starts in late August and. And goes till March, like. We it's so granular, anybody who wants to share anything can and often often does.
Okay, so we won't make any change to that. Are there, I I had asked that if people had other things in the agreement that. Were concerned that you shoot me an email and let me know and I put it on the agenda. I didn't get any emails, so that's great. Uh, but I just want to check in and make sure that there. No issues that we haven't covered other than, of course, assessment methodologies, which is a huge issue. That you're concerned about or or feel we need to have more discussion about. All right, good, so. Incredible job. I mean, we're pretty much done and we've got some. Language housekeeping to do, but we've gotten through. All the the decision points other than assessment methodology, which was my goal. Goal to get done by today with that. So Jake, can we move to your update?
Yeah, I mean, my update are really great. So you get subcommittees, just I don't really have much update on budget. I can bring you. Slide if you'd like at the next meeting. We'll leave it there. We have, honey, there's only three people or entities being paid right now. Me, part time. Amanda as our clerk, well, actually for Russell Dupre as our lawyer and. Abraham's group, we have a current contract with about thirty hours left. We're about to bring you an RFP. Is that RFP on this agenda?
Yes, Jake, but I moved it to community outreach of the.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was looking at that. Secondly, through Burke twelve, we continue to talk to the delegation around the regionalization work. And soliciting their input and support with ongoing funding to move the work forward. As Lucy pointed out, we've had ongoing meetings with Desi to review. Language in the agreement and just general procedures around how and how we move forward. I sent everyone a memo that outlines high school. Cost estimates. So you all received that. We are pretty consistently getting the question, how did you all arrive at the hundred million dollar? Price tag for the eight town merged high school. This memo is designed to address that question. And so you'll see, I outlined a number of different methodologies that we used. To come up with the hundred million dollars. And again, they're all slightly different ways of thinking about it that get us. In the neighborhood of what we've been working with from the very beginning. And then I did add a postscript memo note to this. Based on recent memo that was received, a letter that was received. By Berkshire Hills from the MSBA on enrollment figures, so. I don't know if there's any questions. I don't know how much detail you want me going to Lucy, but.
I I'd just like you to speak a little bit to your post memo note because that is new information and I. I think this full board should hear it.
Sure, so the figures that we were working with for the last year, you know, again, we were, we. Publiced our report a year ago now, were figures that were based on around a seven hundred student high school. And so the cost figures, when we look at square footage, the amount of square foot. per student, the amount of cost per square foot is based on that seven hundred number. Even when we looked at like, um, other projects across the state, the MSBA's finance, we look at a per student price. Um, so all those were again, the found, the, the enrollment was really driving how we got to those models. So Berkshire Hills this past week received, um, as part of their eligibility phase, the MSBA does an enrollment study. Peter could certainly pipe in and um, share his impressions, but the letter, uh, basically has, um, identified the enrollment, um, numbers for a three-town high school at four hundred and eighty-five students and an eight-town high school is six hundred and twenty. Um, so I thought it was important to include that in this memo because we've been working with a seven hundred number and based on the MSBA's figures that they just published, um, their numbers less, uh, is lower. Um, and that, I guess that kind of makes sense, you know, just given enrollment trends and, and the work they do. I know Peter is going back and forth and with them and there'll be a certain amount of, um, uh, maybe not negotiation, but conversation about that number. But what's important to take away from this is that our estimates actually were based on a higher student count. So, um, you know, of about ten percent higher. So um, I would assume then if we sort of re-did a recalibration or recalculation that, um, the methods that we used based on a smaller number would yield, um, slightly smaller costs. Uh, but keep in mind that the range that we came up with was, you know, in the high eighties to the, you know, around a hundred and twenty million. So there's quite, quite a bit of bandwidth there. But even if you use the most liberal methodology, I think, uh, with a new number, you're going to be, um, depending on, you know, they, they provide different amounts, uh, square footage is for vocational areas and vocational students versus academic students. So depending on how many voc shops you had in there, there'd be, uh, the number would be somewhere between, um, you know, that, that hundred million and in one-ten. And again, that's, those are pretty liberal numbers at this point. So.
Jake, just like three clarifying things I'll share, uh, that may be lost on people. What, what's important about this is they uh, have agreed to two-track simultaneously and, and to my knowledge, they've never done that. So, so that's one thing. And that's a big deal. Um, the, the numbers are a, a little lower tha- than we had talked about, but it's also based uh, on a eighty-five percent room utilization, uh, and having once worked in an office that, that, um, put schools into existing schools, uh, that there's a little wiggle room there. The other potential wiggle room would be, um, um, to look at, um, uh, potentially i- in a post-merger world, um, how many choice students we might accept or not accept outside of the, uh, eight towns. So everybody that's already in Berkshire Hills, uh, we're, we're committed to, but, but every year we do accept something on the order of thirty new choice students and, and some of them are from, um, um, the five towns and some of them for, are from other communities. Uh, so I, I feel pretty comfortable that, that the numbers, uh, the MSBA got to are, 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 are right. Or if they're a little lower than we hope they'd be, that, that we can wo- work around that. Uh, and then the upside is with lower numbers, lower numbers, fewer square feet, fewer costs.
Right.
So the bad news is the MSBA agrees that enrollment's going to continue to decline. The good news is that the cost of building the new high school may be lower. So, I mean, that was my takeaway. Um, all right. So, um, subcommittee updates, finance.
So the finance subcommittee had planned to have a big presentation for you tonight, uh, to talk about what our decision points were. But between Friday morning's meeting and today, we were really pressed for time to come up with a, uh, you know, fancy uh, presentation for you. So in lieu of that, I'm going to give you a very brief, high-level overview. And we will work to have that really fancy detailed presentation for you at our next meeting. Um, the finance subcommittee has met more than twelve, um, times to discuss the assessment up, the, the assessment calculations, um, that equates to twenty-four hours of our time at two hours apiece. And that doesn't even touch on what Jake and Matt Abrahams have put into uh, coming up with the gazillion slides that we've asked them to come up with to show us numbers in many different ways. Um, so the board, um, after initially examining um, five variations on how to assess the operational budget, um, none of those, um, really came to our liking. Uh, two of them were the formulas that are currently used by each of the districts and none of, neither of those worked for the entire, uh, new district without imbalance to one, uh, community or another. Um, Matt brought to us two or three other standard formulas that are used throughout the state and other districts. Those also really didn't make us feel real excited about uh, putting all of this together. So, um, we were forced to think outside the box and we got really lucky because Lucy Prashker, who is an attorney, also became a numbers person. And, uh, and brought to us something that we're fondly calling the safety valve method. Um, basically it is a formula that is based on a five-year average of the, um, uh, required minimum contribution with a two percent safety valve that prevents any town from having any huge increases, swings either way. From year to year, um, the capital budget assessment for the new building, um, we're proposing will be based on a ninety-ten split, as you've been hearing about, um, with the Berkshire Hills towns paying ninety percent and the Southern Berkshire towns paying ten percent. Um, and those costs will be calculated using EQV. The six percent regionalization bonus that we're hoping the state will throw in will be applied to the Southern Berkshire portion. So if it's a hundred million dollar cost and ninety goes to Berkshire Hills and ten goes to the Southern Berkshire towns, that six percent, um, um, bonus will be, um, will reduce Southern Berkshire's obligation from ten million to four million. Um, so that gets us closer to the, um, original conversation of two thousand and nineteen where Steve Bannon boldly said Southern Berkshire won't have to pay a thing. The end of the day with the vocational programs being offered to Southern Berkshire towns, the finance committee felt that Southern Berkshire towns would probably be willing to step up to the plate for some. Um, we went on to discuss even further what would happen to future capital expenditures. The biggest concerns being obviously, uh, the New Marlboro and the Egremont buildings, um, because they may need some work. And so with a lot of compromise on many different communities, we, uh, decided that a ninety-ten split in the other direction where Southern Berkshire would pay the ninety percent and Berkshire Hills would pay the ten percent. And all of this would remain in place until the original school bond is satisfied. And then we'll all just share equally as if we're one big happy district. Lucy, did I cover everything? As you had hoped I would?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a little nuance, um, on the ninety-ten, which is that beginning the year that the existing Southern Berkshire debt goes off the books, right? That, what are we paying every year? About three hundred thousand in Southern Berkshire on existing debt? Uh, but get, is that right, Jake?
Yes.
Yeah. Beginning that year, um, the Southern Berkshire towns will pick up a little more each year. I think it's one percent a year uh, until, uh, for the following six years. I think that's the way it works. And then it will continue on with that ratio. So the ninety, the ninety-ten does adjust over that six-year period, which doesn't kick in until I think twenty thirty-three, the beginning of the addition of one percent a year. But at the end of that six-year period, our split is actually closer to eighty-five fifteen.
Thank you. I knew I was forgetting something critical. I see Mr. Dillon's hand is up. Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, uh, the, a- and I think everybody gets this, but, but if, if the cost is of the total project is a hundred million dollars, the in anticipated, uh, percentage that the state's going to cover is, is upwards of fifty percent. We don't know that number yet, but I want people not to misunderstand what the, what, they're not paying ninety or ten percent or investing on, on a hundred percent of the cost. They're investing on the part that's our responsibility.
Could be less than fifty million being divvied up.
That, that's what I'm trying to say. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. I, let me just snip that right into together.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, Nadine, and, um, thank you to board members for your patience. We do want this presentation to be really clear and digestible, not just for you, but for everyone, uh, who attends and will be reporting on it. So we did think it made sense to take a little more time to put that presentation together. Um, okay, community outreach, um, and this is where we've got an RFQ, uh, put together. So, um, if we are in a place in early May, mid-May, where we're ready to take a vote and make a recommendation. And if the recommendation is to proceed with the preferred model and we've got our district agreement, uh, approved by this board, we're going to have a lot of work to do out in the community to educate the community on uh, why we made that recommendation and what it means. An enormous amount of work and, um, the community outreach subcommittee feels that we need some support in doing that community education and essentially conducting a community education campaign. Uh, we need some professional help to help us with that because, um, we just don't have the bandwidth to do it all ourselves. And we frankly don't have the expertise to do it all ourselves. Um, lots of great ideas about doing graphics and animated presentations and things, but we're not experts at that and we don't, we don't have the ability to do it ourselves. And also just getting the information now, we, we understand that's a very difficult thing to do. We've been at it for three years, uh, trying to get the information out, trying to get accurate information out. And, um, the results have been mixed, right? Some, some people in the community are following and have good, accurate information. Too many in the community have bad and incomplete information. So we need some help with that. Uh, so we put together this request for quote, which was circulated. Um, we've got some money in our budget for this, about twenty-five grand. Uh, I don't know if that's going to be enough, uh, to cover everything we've outlined in the RFQ, but, uh, we want to get this posted. We want to see, uh, what kind of response we get and what kind of support uh, we might be able to enlist. So any questions on the RFQ? Okay, so seeing no hands that ask for a motion to approve the posting of the RFQ.
I'm making motion to approve the RFQ.
Thank you, Dave. George, thank you for the second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote, Charlie.
Yes.
Um, yes, Carl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
John? I'm sorry, John Smith here. Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick? Uh, Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, education quality subcommittee update, Deb?
I don't really have an update. Um, we are working on our, um, recommendations as to the benefits that can be gained from, that can be gained from a merger as well as a list of the concerns that need to be attended to in order for those gains to happen for everybody. Um, we're meeting again at the end of April and hope to have a presentation for the committee in May. Since it's not part of the agreement itself, this really will be the supporting material that we'll have to, um, to support the recommendation to for the, um, agreement. So that's what I got. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And operation update, um, John Snyder here. Jake, can you just, uh, update the group on the additional support we got from Rich LeBree?
Yeah, I don't think there's much more than we reported at the last meeting except for, um, I had said at the last meeting that, um, Marie Messini had, um, reviewed the routes, um, and based on her review, we sent that to Rich LeBree of Alliance Education um, to review, uh, those comments. And Rich's, um, responses were reported the last meeting um, by John, who in effect said that, um, there wasn't any, um, significance in terms of changes or costs that Rich felt would be, um, driven by those particular routing adjustments, um, with maybe the exception of potentially buying or, uh, using, you know, smaller vehicles and some of the cases where, uh, a bridge might not support a full bus. Um, but what you do have in front of you now, based on what I sent yesterday, is um, the actual memo from Rich. We asked him to put this on paper. So you have that now with, um, the responses to the, to the route.
That's the, um, the March fifteenth letter that was circulated from Alliance Education Associates. So that's what we've got new that sort of confirms what was described at our last board meeting.
That's right.
Okay, great. Um, so we're actually right on schedule. Uh, anything more before I go to public comments? Okay. Oh, okay. All right. So I'm going to open the floor for public comments. Uh, I see Sharon Gregory's hand is all right, this up, um, Amanda, can you bring Sharon over?
Um, Sharon Gregory, Great Barrington, I have two questions. Um, it was interesting to see the enrollment, uh, estimates for the eight towns. Um, I was wondering, um, is there a point at which time we would notify the current tuition in towns, uh, Richmond, Otis and Sandersfield, um, that we're building a much smaller school and that perhaps, um, we want to develop a timeline by which a new agreement is formed or that they might not have that the eight towns region might not have room for them, um, unless you know, and of course you have the quite a few, um, choice in students for the high school or, uh, as well. So that will have some consequences if the school. that will have some consequences if the school is much smaller. And I'm not saying we should have it larger or not, but those are the questions. And the second question is that currently our district offices are I just contracted in Stockbridge and the school district pays rent to Stockbridge for them. With the eight towns being kind of stretched in a southern southerly way, would there be any consideration to move it to a more central place or will that be deferred to the permanent school committee? That's it. Thank you.
And yeah, I'll let Peter address the first question.
So the first question, the Richmond, Otis and Sandersfield are included in those numbers. So that's the first part of it. The second part is, is there an opportunity to renegotiate those agreements? There is, that's upcoming. But but the numbers are included. I think the the opportunity to make more space or reduce the numbers would be around how many future choice students would be admitted at the high school. The second one, the the and I'm speaking a little out of school, I I think that's it's a conversation that could, this group can make a recommendation, but but it may be left to the next school committee.
Thank you. I would agree with that. We've got enough on our plate. Okay, any other public comment, Joan or Julie? Anything you want to add? Okay. No more hands, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Pete and Andy. Second?
Second.
Great. Seeing no objection, we are we are adjourned at seven twenty four. Thank you all.